Happy New Year, everybody. Welcome to 2024. We can start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the following convention to stand one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We have, the attendance sheet is going around. Welcome, David, to your first meeting, our WLS rep. I hope it's a smooth ride for you tonight. Approval of minutes, Tom sent out the minutes. Did everyone have a chance to review?
Yes.
This is the December fourteenth meeting minutes. Good. This looked okay to me. I don't know if anyone had any comments, thoughts, nope. Okay, then I will make a motion to approve the December twenty twenty-three meeting minutes. Can I get a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Great, then the minutes are approved. Thank you. And we can go right into our regular business with a WLS report with Dr. David.
I don't have much to report since we didn't have meetings. But, you know, I want to take this opportunity to thank you for pointing me as the WLS rep. I want to be open minded if there's any ideas or issues that you'd like to advocate. If I have the library, please reach out to me, talk to me, contact me. That's what I'm here for, whatever I could do to help facilitate between the WLS board and Niershell Library Board of Trustees. Love to participate to the polls, so please reach out. Look forward to a long and successful tenure.
Thank you. That's a wonderful report. I'm gonna skip right to Tom. I do have a couple of things to mention, but I'm gonna let Tom go first and then I'll chime back in.
Thanks, Whitney. Hello, everybody. Just hopefully what I think will be a brief report regarding a number of things going on here at our wonderful library. Always starting with the grants, the money. And I'm happy to say that the grant that was submitted in August twenty twenty-one and approved in August, September of twenty twenty-two, the money is here. And the first grant that we received, the Huguenot Children's Library Air Conditioning Project, which I've already told you many times, it's done. The at the main library, that's the project, the third floor renovation is moving forward, albeit very slowly. We are still grappling with the idea of finding a solution that will allow us financially in a viable way to enclose our teen area as well as create those two extra meeting rooms. We are looking at alternatives and hopefully I'll have something to share next meeting. So stay tuned for that. Our fire stopping and safety project that was approved even earlier in twenty twenty in the middle of COVID is nearing completion according to our architect and construction manager. The report is, as of the last billing cycle, which ended December thirty-first of twenty twenty-three, the contractor is indicating the following percentage is complete. On the third floor, ninety-five percent. On the second floor, ninety percent. The first floor, eighty-five percent. And finally, the basement, the least highest percentage, twenty-five percent. Doug Amelia, our architect, indicates from a billing standpoint, not including the three allowances, this reflects approximately sixty percent of the work. The percentage is consistent with the last inspection, the last independent vendor inspection on January second of this year, which had worked at sixty-one percent complete. After the completion of the repairs, he says the chips and border repairs will continue and all the prep and painting of the access areas. So that's where we stand with that. So we are hopefully reaching closure in the next few months. I don't have a, I don't have a date yet, but of course, when it's done, there'll still be some punch list items to be dealt with and a few other things. But we'll keep you posted as we move forward. The grant, the next New York State Library Construction Grant, which was submitted in August of twenty-two, twenty twenty-two, and the monies that for both grants at Maine and HCL was received in the early fall, we're in really good shape. As far as the Huguenot Children's Library, we are almost complete with that project. The only thing that we have left outstanding is the painting of the first and second floors, and that will happen on Saturday and on Monday. Monday is a holiday, so we will not have to close. They will be able to finish all of that painting. And also, there are some areas on the first and second floor, thanks to the previous project that was the air conditioning project. We installed those slant fin units twenty-five years ago. They're a lot bigger than they are now. So there's some, there's some patching that needs to be done in painting. But other than that, I'll just very briefly summarize, starting from the second floor, we came up with a really amazing, far more efficient and attractive storage area behind the second floor desk. If you've been up there, it looks great. So now things look organized and helps our librarians function more efficiently. And also, the closets that are adjacent to that space have been retrofitted so that we can store all our items in a more efficient fashion. Going down the first floor, our major redo was a revamp of the circulation desk, which looks great and is more efficient, and it allows us to store all these WLS bins, these transit bins that go back and forth between that library, this library, and other WLS libraries. So they're being stored. They're not seen, they're not in the way of young children, so that's good. Lower level really looks great. We have a new floor. We, it's all been painted. We've done a lot of refinishing of the cabinets. We didn't replace them, it was expensive, but we sort of sanded it down, we varnished them. We have a new countertop, a new sink down there, and so it looks, it looks good. Plus, the exterior, the facade of the foundation underneath the brick has been totally redone. Looks great and now is like less available to vermin and other friendly creatures that enter. So that's, that is all done and by next week, we hopefully will be totally complete. We can close that grant out. Let's see. The main library, that project is the noise abatement of phase one, and that is a project that Kira Yello and Elizabeth Joseph have been managing. And we have finally made decisions about the panels that will be installed and the manufacturing is underway. And we hope sometime in February or March, the work will begin. So we'll keep you posted on that as well. Still, of course, waiting on our most recent grants and we'll probably not find out till the summer at best, which was the grants that we submitted earlier in August twenty twenty-three. One is the second phase of the noise abatement project at the main library and then new signage throughout the main library. And the Huguenot Children's Library Grant was a renovation, a redo of the restrooms that are located on the lower level in the first floor. So all good, we're just waiting for that final notification that it has gone through. See, next grant, the ARPA grant, as you folks know, the foundation in tandem with library staff successfully applied for a grant to create a children's pavilion space, an exterior space in the garden right outside of the children's department here at the main library. Thanks to some, a good grant that was well written and also some very effective lobbying, the city did decide to grant that, to make those ARPA funds available. A contract has been received. We are now in the process of looking at the contract. I sent the contract to the Buildings and Grounds Committee a few days ago and it had been sent previously as well. The big issue that is facing us before, in tandem with the contract, is the fact that when this building was built, there was a, there was an idea that there would be some sort of early version of a solar energy system, which for some reason, we don't really know why, the city never really implemented. But one element of this project was that they buried two very large tanks in that, in that garden space. And we're trying to get a handle on those tanks, you know, are they intact? How big they are? What does it mean in terms of removal versus some sort of remediation where they'd remain and be filled with some sort of material? And so we, we've gotten prices from vendors. One vendor has given us a very good price, a very attractive price, but we decided to go back to them and ask them for an alternative price if the tanks turn out to be, you know, larger than what we originally thought, which is very possible. Or what would it cost if we decided to not remove the tanks but to leave them in the ground and to fill them? You know, maybe that's a more efficient approach. One comment that sort of threw, threw me when I heard from this vendor, they were looking at the blueprint that had been created in the seventies for that tank. And he, the vendor, one of the, one of the employees of the vendor that we're interested in, made a comment about, is it possible that the tanks could be insulated in like asbestos? Which I don't really know. So we'll, we'll find out about that. And if, I'm sure Cory, you probably have dealt with that. Yeah. Yeah. Oh, God, what a headache. No. Well, that's, that's a good question, right?
So the soil should be good.
Yeah. Right? Because there was, and there was never, from what we understand, there was no oil or any other toxic, it was water.
Kind of reported, they get a record of the B C. They'll say, I recorded that these things were removed, there's nothing in it, so it's good. Should be.
Yeah. We, we, you know, we already have dealt with this because there are oil tanks in that back garden area, but part of the side, and they've been registered, you know, with the county.
Should be B C, should have.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Could be. But I, you know, Yep, so, so we're ready to deal with that. And we have, we have spoken with a variety of, you know, the vendors and also the county, et cetera. So if there's something that's untoward, I want to say unexpected, I think, I think we're ready to deal with it. The question is if it does have the wrinkle of this asbestos, and if it's intact, I guess we're okay, but if it's not, yeah, yeah, which could be a real headache and could be more expensive. Yeah. If that happens, I'd love to talk to you a little bit more about it if you're available. It would be good. So fingers crossed that, 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 that the tanks are intact and that they were never lined or coated with any kind of asbestos product. So that's, that's where we stand with that. And I know the, the Buildings and Grounds Committee is planning to meet at some point to talk about this issue. And, you know, the library staff, which consists of myself, Bobby Simic, and Lisa Itzkowitz are ready to meet and God bless you, Chris Sellen too, would, would love to be at any meeting just to go over that. So that is, so that is that as far as that grant is concerned. There is a, and I don't think it's been announced, at least I haven't seen it through WLS, but I, but I found it earlier today. There is another trustee institute that is coming up and I can send you all information about it, but just to give you a brief synopsis, it's called Tools for Transforming Library, Municipality Relationships, and it will be on March sixth of this year from five-thirty to seven-thirty. And it looks like, as I can tell, it looks like it may be not a Zoom but an onsite, which would be at WLS headquarters, which is in Elmsford on Taxter Road. And I send all of this to you. And it, it looks like a really interesting workshop and I'll send you the whole. No, it's not. No. No. No, it's one that's, that's being sponsored solely by the Westchester Library System. And I have this document, I'll send it all to you so you can decide if you have the time, et cetera, to participate. Just arguably, our most successful program is slated once again to begin. And it is slated to begin on February first, and that is the AARP Tax Aid Program that's held at our library, that will be held in, in this theater, in this meeting room. Been going on since before I was here and it's been tremendously successful and it survived even COVID. And it's really back to where it was, which means that people can, can come to the library on Tuesdays and Thursdays. The program hours are from nine in the morning to two PM, though I will say the, some hazing volunteers oftentimes don't leave until after four o'clock because there's always, you know, the final cleanup work that needs to be done, assistance, et cetera.
Tom, how long does it run?
It runs, that's a good question. It's, it runs through April eleventh, Lucille. And of course, it's a walk-in basis only, no appointments. And we'll have signup sheets that'll be available on the morning, you know, to try to manage that as much as possible. And I believe community relations will begin formally publicizing on January twenty-second. Just finally, our friends continue to chug along. Again, they're asking for no donations until at least February because we are working towards sort of renovating that office space where the friends are located at their back room operation. And it's also a space that's being used now by the children's department for storage, et cetera, et cetera. And the foundation continues to move forward. They just had a, they will have a board meeting, I should say, on January sixteenth, which is Monday? Tuesday? Tuesday, Tuesday. It'll be held here in our meeting room. And they are working towards their May ninth, twenty twenty-four Guardian Gala, which will be held at the Green Tree Country Club with a nice grouping of people who will be honored, both national and local. And so more information of that will be forthcoming in the near future. And I'm done.
Thank you. And do you have a personnel report?
I do. First is an action, happy to say that we recently hired a page for our Huguenot Children's Library. Her name is Rehan Parcha. Her salary is sixteen dollars per hour and her start date was December twelfth to twenty twenty-three. So I would ask for a motion to accept her employment.
Sure, great. I can make a motion to accept the employment of Rehan Paracha with the details Tom just stated. Can I get a second?
Second.
Lucille, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? No, then welcome to Rehan and thank you for their service.
Susan's very excited about Rehan joining the team. I actually have some really exciting news, not ready to ask for a board vote because the start date for this person is not till February. But as you folks know, the board was supportive of creating a new children's librarian position that began this year. And it's a librarian one with a particular focus on outreach to the school district, you know, the elementary school and preschool populations. And after an extensive search, we ended up hiring somebody who was a part-time employee here who was really wonderful. So her name is, you may have met her, her name is Florence Simaloya. And she is really smart. She was, gave us a great interview. She's working hourly now. She lives here in New Rochelle. She has, I think, two children, two very young children. She's originally from Zambia and she's just a great, she, I was part of the second interview and it was really, it's, I'm excited to see that she'll be beginning and her colleagues are all really excited to see that she will be part of the team on a full-time basis. So more, more about Florence next month. And we're also interviewing for an hourly clerk position and that is being managed by our librarian too, in charge of circulation, Milton Cobb. And we've gotten lots of really good applications for this part-time position. And so they've started the process of interviewing and hopefully we'll have something to announce in the next week or two. That's it.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions? No, good. Great. So I will skip back up to myself to say two sentences, which is, will constitute my president's report. I just want to give everybody an update on our director search process because as you know, we just want to make sure that everybody is feeling like they know what's going on. We are launching this week still, yes, I know we only have one more day left, our RFP for a search firm. So that's what's happening. So when we know more, we'll tell you, we have, we had some modifications to an RFP thanks to the, the, it's really, it's not technically the Personnel Committee, it's an ad hoc search committee, but we will get that up and running and I just wanted to let everybody know. We'll move on. Assistant Director's Report, Elizabeth.
Thank you, everyone. Happy New Year.
Happy New Year.
So I thought for our January report, I would update you on what we are doing with the strategic plan. I thought we could do this like every six months to give us enough time to collect some data and some insights. Goal one, which is our facilities, Tom mentioned that we are now moving into phase one of our sound abatement project, which was funded by the New York State Construction Grant for twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three. We have selected some panels.
Elizabeth, did you talk into the?
Sure. Make sure we get it recorded. Thank you.
So yes, so we have selected the panels that will be in the teen room. That's a fun design. And then there's the lobby atrium, which is a little bit more subtle and stated. Tom went into length of what's happening at the Huguenot Children's Library. That work is almost complete or, yeah, just about complete. What we are seeing with that grand project is storage and workspace solutions that has really made an impact in how they work and how they move within their space. Goal two is, is technology. And the past six months, nothing flashy to report, but some very critical and crucial items which are essential to our operations, starting with an upgraded network, which includes all kinds of peripherals, network cables, wireless access points, new servers. Our IT team, which is a phenomenal team of two, mighty two people, have done some really incredible work. So there is a new fiber optic connection, which has been really important because a lot of our public service computers, there's a lot of consumption of audio visual materials that people look at. We have a new public facing computer and this was important because now we have made all of our local history clipping files available. So people can just go into these computers on our second floor and look at all of the the local history clippings. And last but not least, our computer lab now has new video conferencing equipment and an interactive display system, which is great for like virtual programs and meetings. Goal three, which focuses on partnerships. Clearly, the library has been doing a fantastic job in partnerships even before the strategic plan was implemented, but I think now it's much more operationalized and it's really become part of like our everyday work. So the library was present at major city events, back to school nights, really concerted effort there. And then we've also been working with the summer camps to host art exhibits and that's been really phenomenal in terms of response and engagement. And of course, all of the usual city-led events, like the Pride Event, Teagues of Union. And this has been sort of an annual thing now and it's great to be part of those, those events and have people actually look forward to coming to a library table. The Niershell Council on the Arts partnered with them on many initiatives, including the Art Fest and other rotating exhibits. The Lincoln Park Conservancy is really sort of moving in to our space by sort of funding and sponsoring programs. In February, we are doing a documentary screening of Maya Angelou and a conversation with the directors. So that's something that they are, they've been really a big supporter of. But then we have also been present at some of the events and the posts and like Earth Day and the annual youth teen celebration. And last but not least is Healthy Yards, which have also proven to be a new and strong partner. Partnerships continues, thanks to all of you and for all of the recommendations and the sort of encouragement that you provided. We do have a teenage, a teen advisory board and our first meeting is going to be in February. We have about seven people who have volunteered and one of them is, is none other than, can we, can we reveal it, is Cory's son. So really excited that he's going to be a part of it. And so our approach to creating the advisory board was not just to reach out to public schools, but we also reached out to the private schools, including Laona and Good Council and Solition. Yeah, so it's, it's wonderful, the response that we've got to that. And also the Youth Council and the Niershell Police Department has also made some presence in the teen space, which has really been positive to see. A new partnership that we have formed recently is with an organization, White Plains Organization Base, White Plains Base Organization called Girls Inc. And they do a lot of program for young girls who are from marginalized and underserved communities. And so there's going to be a series of programs, including leadership development and college and career success pathways. So really excited about some of those programs. And last but not least, the Hugh Doyle Senior Center, there was a lot of talk about programs that their members can come to a library. And so there's, there's some conversation about transport. And I mentioned this last month, but the library was invited to be on the advisory board for the children's center at the Niershell Family Court. And then there is a partnership of after-school and summer learning that is sort of hosted by both the city and the school district, which we were invited to as well. So really great to be at those tables and to be part of that conversation. And of course, the community partners in Niershell, which include the Council, Community Services and the Community Network. This fall, we hosted an open house meeting for them and took them on a tour of the library, which in turn they are going to take back to their own clientele and talk about, talk about the library and what we can do for them. And this fall, we also hosted an affordable housing symposium that was really well attended and it's going to be one of many in a series that the Niershell Council of the Union Services is going to be hosting here. And then there's also the Employment Fair, which was merging of various partnerships, including First Source Job Referral and the Westchester Community Action Program. So some really strong partnerships that meet differing needs at different times. With diversity and outreach, this has been, this has been really interesting because one of the first things that we are going to be doing after our first stint with our STEM Alliance partnership with STEM Alliance and WLS is a program called Reconnect with Tech. And it's a program that WLS brought to our attention and we are going to be hosting. And it's, it's a series of classes that not a series of classes that not just provides digital literacy skills, but they're the members also get a Chromebook and a hotspot. And this is really targeted to formerly incarcerated individuals. So it's it's really wonderful that the library can be a part of that that growth and that journey for them. And then the International Music and Dance Performance Series, which really explores cultures across various ethnic and racial backgrounds. Stories of Exile, as you might remember, is an American Library Association grant that we received, which HNA led a series of book discussions, which is really well attended. We are also looking at engaging more with the new residents and the new residences here in the downtown area. So there's been several meet and reads prior to concerts. And Community Relations has also distributed postcard titled Welcome to Your Next Chapter. And last but not least, and this is is really exciting in our archives, which is goal five. It was sad to see Sue, who had been a longtime employee of New York City Library, I think she's here for about forty years. And she really did our local history clippings file. And when she left, we had her do a full documentation of her process and her workflow. So we now have that as part of our own archives. And it's really going to help us sort of refine it, improve it. And then when the next person takes over that that responsibility, they have something to to work on. The New York Shell High School actually is collaborating with us on another archival project. We are going to be working with their school library. And students are coming in to digitize the yearbooks and then making that available. And that's that's really exciting to see. Before too long, David Rose, our our archivist is going to be contributing to a column every month. It's the Archives column where he's going to be sort of picking out some of the gems and some of the unusual things in our photography collection. And last but not least is the things that he does in terms of making our collections accessible to our community. He's been doing some presentations. The last one was in October called Halloween, where he really picked out some unusual scary, surprising photos from our photography collection. So really making some inroads. And there's some some other great ideas that are also bubbling to surface about the archive. So good stuff.
Thank you, Elizabeth. I have a quick question about the teen advisory board. How many kids are you looking for?
We're looking for up to seven, seven members.
You already have seven?
We have that seven.
Okay, so you're good. All right, just check in. I have a teen.
Yes, you do.
So I was like.
Maybe we can make room for her. We don't have enough girls.
Okay, yeah, she's a quiet, but but forceful kid, so.
We would, do you have the access to the application?
No.
I will send.
Yeah, send it to me. I don't know. I don't know. I'm not. I don't know. But I would love to. If she could, if it's not too late and if you can make room.
No.
And if not, I totally get it.
Giving people another week to apply.
Okay, yeah, send it to me.
Yeah, I I think a few extra on the teen advisory group is good because attendance is not always entirely a hundred percent.
So yeah, one of the things that we are asking in our application is like the best time for teens to come. So we're monitoring that too. So we don't want to have a meeting on Sunday afternoon. That's not good. So.
And then my other question is, what is the New York Police Department? Like, what's their role as part of this advisory?
So they're actually, they are not part of the advisory board. So they have been coming into the teen space to engage with the teens, to kind of create a relationship with them.
Yep, they they they've done some gaming with some of our kids. Yeah, and they're they really are very fun and you know, just sort of accessible. And it's really refreshing to see that this version of the police department seems to have more focus on community policing, which is, I think, really, really important. The the police chief seems to really believe in this. And we've seen that. I mean, we've we have relationships with the the social media officer. And she's been terrific and she's worked with us in a variety of ways. And and I think Elizabeth mentioned earlier, there's a police night out every year in the summertime. And Denise Link has been a part of that for for a number of years. So, you know, I mean, and quite frankly, even though things are pretty calm these days, we're lucky we have the New York Police Department as a resource. They're very responsive. Sometimes we do encounter situations in the building where we need a police presence. And they are they appear and they tend to handle things quite low key and reasonably. So I think we're really lucky. I think for all the years that I've been here, I feel like this iteration of the police department feels very available and accessible. You know, and I think our staff would would agree.
Also, in your board packet is fire to an author event next next Thursday, January eighteenth, which is really to coincide and recognize January sixteenth, which is the the National Day of Racial Healing. So we could not host it on that day. So we're hosting hosting it on January eighteenth. And Reggie Mara wrote a book called Healing American Narratives. And Reggie is a an alumni of Laona University and a good friend of the friends.
Yeah, and I just want to take a step back and Elizabeth has shared this really impressive, I think it's an impressive statement and a recital of all the things that are that it's been accomplished here. And I I I give credit to our staff. Our staff in each department really is working towards making all of these goals and these objectives happen. And there's not a lot of convincing. They 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 know what they need to do. It's great to have a document in front of them. And I congratulate the staff and the board for supporting the staff in doing this.
I was gonna actually say the same thing. Being intimately involved, as many of us here have been with the strategic planning process, and then seeing it come to life is nothing short of magical. And it's, you know, of being kind of a a co-creator of our own reality and watching all of these plans come to fruition step by step, right? It's not going to happen overnight, but little by little, these things happen and it's wonderful. I love these reports.
Thank you.
You said every six months, if you if you could, like, don't overwhelm yourself, but
No, but I I feel like the team.
Awesome. It's really uplifting.
Well, no, we, I mean, we want to, we want to report on like, you know, some big things.
Well, thank you. Well done to you and 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 staff and to everyone else. Because I know you know, all these goals are broken up into, you know, kind of cohorts of folks who are working on everything. And I know it takes a a library and village to get it done. Thank you. Committee reports, unless anyone else has any comments? Ready? Okay. Budget Committee.
Just put out a calendar for next Thursday. The Budget Committee, just one note on the committee reports. The Budget Committee should be Budget and Finance Committee. And then we go down to the fourth line. That should be Treasury and Audit Committee.
That's right.
So I was looking at it and I'm like, wait a minute. Is this budget and finance or is it? Then I realized it's tre- the the fourth committee is Treasury and Audit. And the first one's budget and finance. But other than that, it's nothing.
Just while we're on this quick topic, thank you, Jean, for preparing this budget overview. I see this number in the corner. So we're now in January, which is we're just past the fifty percent mark through our fiscal year. Is this number forty one point nine percent of the budget remaining after encumbrances? Is that typical for this time of year? It is? And then it'll slow down a little bit for the rest of the year. Okay, thank you. That was all I wanted to know. Okay, Buildings and Grounds and the CROCK Committee, that, as Tom mentioned, will focus on the ARPA grant related to the children's garden and pavilion outside. We, as a as a committee, need to look at the the like earth MRI. It's a magnetic resonance imaging result to just talk about, just make sure we're familiar. And then because the foundation are the ones entering into this grant that pertains to the facilities over which we have agency as trustees, and that's one of our main three obligations is to oversee the facilities. We really need to be involved in that discussion and be very familiar with what that contract looks like. I think it's a little bit unusual for another outside organization to have a contract that impacts the facilities that isn't us. So I think we just really need to be well versed in in what that contract says. And be part of the, you know, the 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 kind of brain trust that dictates how to move forward. I think that's all I have to say. We're we'll have an upcoming meeting within the next, you know, week or two.
And you have a chair on it. So you
Who's that?
You got a chair.
I am. Yes, and don't worry, Corey, I will bug you as needed, because I know you, we have a lot of good expertise. Yeah, excellent. Community Relations, Shannon.
I'm just going to be kind of a quick report because Elizabeth already mentioned and Tom also, a lot of the programs coming up in the next couple of weeks. There've been a few programs at the beginning of this year. Some yoga events have well well attended. And then there was also another film that was part of the true crime film series with Chris, the black K.K. Klansman on January sixth. Kind of a good day for it. I've had fourteen people attending. Coming up, I'm just trying to Elizabeth already mentioned the author talk with Reggie on the eighteenth. Two knitting clubs are coming up on the twelfth and on the twenty sixth. There is an art exhibit by Cedric Lucas. Is that the one that's in the gallery in the gallery right now? Or is that?
No, I, that's a new one.
Okay, well, we don't have a date for that. Okay. And what did you not? You you mentioned you mentioned the Maya Angelou documentary that will be February twenty fifth. And I see here on the list a six week book and I workshop series that began today. Is that every? No, it's twentieth. Twentieth. If I could read, yes. That would be good. A quick update from the very busy B-Talk room that's just that's just hopping, providing all these great services. There is a summary, which I found really interesting of the technology that was borrowed in in all of twenty twenty three or December twenty two to twenty three. And if you're interested, patrons checked out three hundred and seventy two hotspots, two hundred and thirty nine Chromebooks and thirty iPads during that time period. So that's really taken up and it's become being utilized a lot more, which is great. The Job Search Coach, Rebecca Mason, is continues to help patrons with any kind of job needs, interview, prep and help and job search on the internet, stuff like that. Happens on Tuesday evenings from five to seven thirty. There is a community outreach, the food pantry, visits to Isaac Young Middle School continues. That did happen today. That's the right date, I think, at four o'clock. Notary nights, every third Thursday of the month. The next date is next week, the eighteenth, from six to seven thirty. ESL classes for beginners are begin also on the eighteenth and run until April thirtieth. The civic citizenship classes for the citizenship test and interview is on Saturday afternoons at one o'clock. And the high school equivalency orientation session, I think the the first session happened already. It's every last Saturday of each month from ten to twelve. So the next session will be on January twenty seventh. That's it for my report. Thank you.
The notary notes, where is the location?
It's usually on the second floor of the help center room.
Yeah, in the B-Talk room, yeah.
Oh, the office session, you mean? For the notary?
Yeah.
Here, so.
Yeah, that's a busy day, the eighteenth. Thank you. The Treasury and Audit Committee, which will be so modified. I think that's Tatiana. Yeah, nothing to report here. Personnel Committee.
Yes. I am happy, happy to have a report. And it will require some action. So after months of discussions and conversations, I'm I'm very pleased to report that we have an agreed upon memorandum of agreement between the library's Personnel Committee Representatives and our CSEA Union Representatives for a four year contract that will start retroactively from July first twenty twenty three, since the contract ended in June thirtieth, twenty twenty three. And it will go through June thirtieth of twenty twenty seven. And I I can get into the specifics of, it includes wage increases that will be two and a half percent for years one and two, and then two percent increases for years three and four. It will include contributions to dental benefits that will be six percent, a six percent increase over the four year period. The allocations are are two percent in year one, one percent in year two. And for years three and four, it's a one point five percent increase for each years. It includes adjustments, minor adjustments, but significant in terms of how it impacts staff time to the compassionate leave, making an adjustment to the language. But so so that it will allow staff per time depending on religious affiliations. We have put back in, it was accidentally removed, a clothing allowance, but ensured that there's a some adjustment so that employees will receive up to three hundred and twenty five dollars, but they have to turn in the receipt. So they will be reimbursed for that which they spend.
Could I just add that it's for custodial staff only?
Custodial staff, sorry. They'll say custodial staff, not all employees.
Everybody.
Not trustees, just custodial staff of the library. Yes. And just clarification to some language so that everyone is under the same understanding with regard to working hours around Christmas and New Years. And adjustments to vacation and comp time, which again, I can go into now, but I I think
Does anyone want to know?
We we don't, I don't think we have the details. That can be provided to the the trustees upon request. So I am asking.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, you may.
The wage increase you said is two point five percent for year one and two, and then two percent. Is that, so is that?
Three and four.
So is the increase two point five for the first year and then another two point five?
Yes.
And then two, and so that, okay, so I got it.
Yes.
It was a nine percent increase over the four years. That was a hard one. That was a hard one percentage that we, you know, agreed upon.
Yes.
Through lots of negotiation. And before, so we should all ask questions, but I just want to say kudos all of the laurels.
No, 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 this is, it's a, it's a, it's a group effort.
To Lucille for spearheading this. This was not easy. And not only just because it's not easy, but also because we were really pushing for a four year agreement. We have Tom right now. We needed all of his institutional knowledge. We have Jean. We we needed everybody's institutional knowledge so that you know, in in three years from now, when you're beginning to think about, you know, renegotiating this agreement, it's like you need people who who can take it back to the last one. And so a four year contract is incredible. No one here will really have to do this again, probably.
Well, we don't know that, but maybe it's possible.
Yeah, we hope that this will be satisfactory to everybody and good job.
Thank you. Thank you, ready? It's also important just to have a four year contract because we have had quite a few short contracts and because because we again had gone over the the time, the expiration date of the contract, it means that for example, for the last contract, no sooner than we agreed upon it, we had to, in the next several months, we had to begin conversations again, which is taxing across the board. You're always negotiating. And I think that's that's difficult for the for the union staff. It's just it's just taxing for everyone. So So, um, I think this was beneficial across the board for for us and for them and for Jean.
Yeah, and and I want to thank Lucille. You really did an amazing job because it was a um, a very, a long drawn-out process for a variety of reasons, but you kept your eye on the ball. And Whitney, you were there all, each step of the way.
As well as Tatiana.
Tatiana joined us late.
Yes, it was a slight, slight hazing, but I mean, I think that is.
And Daniel helped too, Daniel Bonet, so it was a real team effort. And Jean, um, somehow, some way was involved, you know, with a variety of issues. Anyway.
The other thing, um, the other thing I just will say is that this, um, the form of contract was kind of an old template. And there was a lot of language that no longer applies. And so part of why this took so a a long time is we went deep and tried to really clear up some, um, some kind of just.
Just sure that the language was clear and consistent.
And consistent and just made sense. Um, and so hopefully this is a nice, uh, it will be a starting off point for the next round.
Yeah.
Whenever that comes.
May I make a motion? Any more questions first? I would like to make a motion for the Library Board to approve, prove, um, the, uh, four-year, the memorandum of agreement between the Union and Personnel Committee for a four-year contract, um, dated effective July first of twenty-twenty-three through June thirtieth of twenty-twenty-seven.
It's the full board.
For the information.
It's the Union and the full board, not just.
Oh, sorry, sorry. It's the Union and the full board. Um, but I did want to do, there is kind of somewhat of an addendum in addition to that, and I think that I should note that too. So in addition to, um, when we, when we, when we agree upon this contract, so hold on for my motion for a second. Um, when this contract is is agreed upon, it is a memorandum of of agreement that it impacts all union full-time staff. But there are, uh, an hourly staff, uh, except for library pages. However, that each, each time we, we agree upon the memorandum of agreement and have this, have this contract, there are, um, some non-union full-time employees who, uh, also gain that benefit. So in this, and there are five of them, it would be Tom, Jean, Elizabeth, Toby, who's Nate, last name I, I. Thank you, and Lisa Itskowitz. So I am asking for a motion that approves the, no, I'm making a motion.
Yeah.
Um, to approve the Union memorandum, to approve the memorandum of agreement. And in addition to that.
Do them separately.
Can I do them separately?
Absolutely, and then it's easier.
Well, then let me go back to my first.
Yes.
I am making a motion to approve the memorandum of agreement between the Union and the Library Board, um, for a four-year contract effective July first, twenty-twenty-three, that runs through through July thirtieth of twenty-twenty-seven.
June thirty.
Thank you. That runs through June thirtieth of twenty-twenty-seven.
I'll second it.
Thank you, although it would be nice for somebody not on Personnel Committee.
But I will second it.
Thank you, Rhiannon.
All in favor?
Well, I figured that was you as the president, right?
All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions?
I would like to make, thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you. No small effort. I would like to make another motion that, um, that we also approve for the, for the five non-union full-time employees that include.
Before we make this motion, I'll just add an addendum to your addendum.
Okay.
It's just to say that there, we know there's another topic that you shared with us, and we don't feel that we had enough time to give it the attention it deserves. So we're just gonna do this blanket motion, and then we will get back to you about the other topic that we can discuss later.
Thank you, thank you. Okay.
Good.
I'm making a motion, um, for the board to, uh, consider and approve, uh, um, the, uh, two point five percent increase in the same, the same yearly increases for our, our non-union full-time employees. Um, uh, that include Tom, Jean, Elizabeth, Toby, and Lisa Itzkowitz.
We're not all last-named Itzkowitz.
Yes, thank you, yeah.
It's family.
Lisa Itzkowitz, Toby.
Tom Itzkowitz, Toby Itzkowitz.
May I get a second?
Second, yes.
Thank you.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? No, thank you, thank you.
Thank you. Um, nothing else to report.
Great, the motion, okay, then, well, that's a lot, and that was a big feat, so thank you. Um, great. Policy and Fela.
Yes.
Hi.
Hello. Hello. Um, excuse me if my voice is a little low at some points. I would like to remind everyone of our, um, previous meeting, um, on December the fourteenth, where we, uh, the board approved the room rental, the new room rental policy. Um, we did that with the caveat that we would return to this one issue of tiered pricing or dual pricing for nonprofit clients, um, and separate that from our business clients. Um, and possibly add, uh, fee waiver lang, language or hardship language. Uh, the Ad-Hoc Committee, which I had the absolute pleasure of working with, um, which, um, I will mention all of their names. Uh, Elizabeth, Tom, and Lisa, Toby, and Ed.
Not all last-named Itzkowitz. Make sure that's.
I think I could actually go through all their last names.
Honorary Iskowitz. But, um, that, for all their work and their insight, their knowledge, uh, about this specific policy, it did, um, there were, and especially in regards to hardship. Um, so what we decided, and the Ad-Hoc Committee, was that we would have a tiered pricing. So we'll have nonprofit pricing or not-for-profit pricing, and then we'll also have business or organizational pricing that's separate. Um, the fee structure, uh, we are, uh, uh, what we're doing with that second tier, the, for the not-for-profits, is we're bringing the pricing down slightly. This only pertains to the room rentals, so of the theater and meeting room, which are combined, for organizations that are for-profit, uh, that fee is two hundred dollars for the four-hour period. For not-for-profits, it's one hundred and fifty dollars for that, um, four hour, up to four hours. Um, so there is a discount there. Um, as Tom has said before, and I think after reviewing the, um, the prices that a lot of ours, or I I call them the sister libraries, but are are, um, other libraries within WLS that they charge, um, we are, it's a very good deal to rent from us. Um, the separate, the second, um, space that you can rent is the meeting room, it's towards the back. And that price for for-profits is seventy-five dollars, for not-for-profits, fifty dollars. So knowing that, um, I would like to, oh, are there any questions about that? And yes, please, thank you.
I think you did a great job, um, and I think it's really great to be concrete and not kind of leave it open. So I I think that's, that's, um, was a good move. And I also, um, I'm just ask, wondering, like, should, should it be, is there a reason why it's so much lower than our sister libraries?
It's not that it's so much lower, and there are some libraries, it's interesting, because we're not, it's not a monolith, like, within the group, within all of the libraries. Some have tiered pricing, some don't have tiered pricing. We want our community organizations to take advantage of this space. We want them to rent the space. So we want to make sure that it's constantly filled with people. We want to make it accessible. So we're not going to make it prohibitive. Um, and obviously, you know, we would have to then, um, potentially, like, ask all of our sister libraries, um, you know, about the organizations that rent from them and maybe their funding. So we think that this is very good pricing. It's the first time it's raised in decades. Over two decades.
What was that before?
One hundred dollars, yeah.
Okay, so, all right, that's good.
Yeah. Um, and with the slight increase, as we mentioned last time, to, um, the Steinway rental, the piano rental, the wireless microphones, that pricing will stay the same for everyone, because it's still quite low, right? So we feel like it's within reach and also.
But I think it's smart too to do, it's to do like, um, equipment rental, because that helps to pay for the maintenance of those.
Exactly, that's exactly right. Yeah, the piano tuning.
Yeah, and yeah, exactly. Thank you.
Of course.
Yes.
The, um, seventy-five dollars is for four hours as well?
Up to four hours.
Up to four hours, that's a great deal. And then, I don't know if you know, do you know what the range is in the WLS system?
Well, it's interesting, um, I can probably, I might be able to pull some of them up.
Just a range, I know. Exactly.
But there were certain libraries that I looked into. Oh, yes, actually. So, do I have them here? Uh, yes, I do. I have some of them here. So I just did a sample of some libraries, like for SARS. For them, well, some libraries have multiple rooms. So it's, you know, it it depends on what the size of the room is, so you're gonna have to look at that scale. So for them, for, uh, for the Sarsdale Library, again, so many rooms, like, they have a smaller meeting rooms, like, they have this room called the Scott Room. That one is, um, fee for profit, that one matches ours, the two hundred dollars for four hours. Um, and they have like a triple-tiered pricing. So they have the Sarsdale nonprofits, other nonprofits, and then for-profits for individuals. Um, for Green.
Green.
Greenberg?
Greenberg.
Yes, for Greenberg, that one is two hundred and fifty dollars for one of their rooms, but again, there appears that there might be more than one room.
But do you think, I'm I'm not sure, the Sarsdale and River, you think those rooms are comparable to the rooms we're renting?
That I would have to look into, because it wasn't.
It sounds like we're in the same range, but if you do an auditorium, two hundred bucks in there, like, you get a little room.
And you're getting a smaller room, correct? It's hard for me to say, because within the fee structures, they didn't mention the size of all the rooms, so I'd have to then correlate, like, I'd have to find that data and.
I mean, I think some of those libraries that we researched, they offer something that we don't. Guess what it is?
What's that?
Parking.
Oh, okay. Okay.
Well, thank you for your work on this. I know.
Thank you, yes.
Oh, I actually, there is one more that I could tell you, and that one is for the White Plains Library, not tiered. Um, that one, their auditorium, the capacity is a hundred and twenty-five. It is listed, so it's easy for me to track that. And for up to four hours, that's three hundred dollars.
We're in the space. Yeah, yeah.
No, we're all four hundred and fifty-five.
Yeah, right.
So it seems like we're in the right.
Yeah. We're, we're up, we're finally in the correct place.
Right, our, our, our idea was to raise rates up just a a bit, but we still wanted to be the option that people would most want to choose, because we're a public library, it's taxpayer-supported, and, um, to have the library filled with people is really sort of what it's about. Um, and I, and I want to thank, um, our committee, um, Lisa, Ed, and Toby, Elizabeth. Yes, yeah. Yeah, um, and, uh, uh, Fela and Lucille and, um, Tatiana?
Beth.
Beth, sorry. Um, it was really, it was a great Ad-Hoc Committee of staff and board members. And we had a variety of meetings together, you know, some, um, in person, some virtual, it was, it was a really great collaboration.
And I I appreciate you including me in this, but I will say that the the person who carried the most water was truly Fela.
I, my, my great.
I will, I, yes, I will, I will exactly say that, and thank you for sidebars and for being available when had questions or we needed to do additional research.
You know, I always, I'm always happy to share my opinions.
I know about you.
Thank you. So are you ready for your motion?
So yes, I would like to make a motion, or I'm making a motion, for the Library Board to accept, to approve the tiered rates or the room rental policy that is now dated, and that was the one that I shared with you, that was dated January the eleventh, I believe.
That's today.
That's today. Yes, it is dated today, because it did come out today, so, uh, for today, January eleventh, twenty-twenty-four. So, um, may I get a second?
Tatiana? Great, all in favor?
All aye.
Aye, any opposed? No, good. So the the room fees pass along with the rest of it.
Thank you, Tom, for.
Thank you.
Just to kind of add to that, um, our form is going to be, did you see that last communication? We are getting a fillable form that you could fill out online.
Oh, yes.
Yes.
Yeah, that's great.
And it's going to be translated as well.
Yeah.
Wonderful, good. Um, our last committee, Special Projects, I think that is Beth, who is not here, so we'll assume there's nothing to report. Um, any questions about anything else before we move to our public discussion? Good, public discussion complete, um, then, um, anyone has has anything else to say? I will, uh, make a motion to adjourn. Can I get a second?
Sure.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Good, I'm meeting adjourned.